Counselor Baker.
Here.
Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Siomo.
Present.
Counselor Edwards. Counselor Sabby George.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Garrison.
Here.
Counselor Janey.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Wu.
Present.
And Counselor Zecham.
Here.
Madam President, all are in. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I've been informed by the clerk that our quorum is present. At this time, I would like all guests, staff, and my colleagues to please rise as Counselor Wu introduces our clergy for the day, who will bring us through the invocation. I ask that everyone remain standing after the invocation as she leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Counselor Wu.
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, everyone. It's my honor to introduce Dr. Song Hyun Park. He is the Assistant Professor of Old Testament and Dean of the Boston Campus of Gordon Conwell, known as the Center for Urban Ministerial Education, or CUEM. Dr. Park joined Gordon Conwell in 2004 after years of extensive archaeological work in Israel and teaching internationally. He's fluent in four lang-- well, this says four languages: Korean, Spanish, English, and Modern Hebrew, although I learned earlier that he actually can read up to seven languages. And he currently teaches Old Testament, Biblical Hebrew, and Biblical Archaeology. CUEM officially opened with 30 students in September 1976 at 12th Baptist Church in Roxbury. After moving from Roxbury to Jamaica Plain in the '90s, it is now located at its own campus facility, the Michael E. Haynes Academic Building, just a block from its original Roxbury location. The campus currently serves more than 400 students, representing 70 denominations and 21 distinct nationalities. Classes are taught in English, Spanish, and Portuguese, with occasional classes in American Sign Language. They focus on helping equip urban pastors and church leaders for more effective ministry and outreach in urban communities by breaking down the cultural, ethnic, and socioeconomic barriers that divide us. Thank you so much. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Song Hyun Park.
Good afternoon. It's an honor to be here with you. And I bring greetings from my staff, our students, our faculty. At noon every day, our staff gather together at the entrance of our campus building and pray on behalf of the city. So what we will be doing here, I'm thanking it as an extension of what I am doing every day on behalf of this city, joining with you in that effort. I will share a little bit about my campus vision as a way of our prayer. Because our prayer, since we were founded in 1976, has been to seek the peace of the city. We believe that when we seek the peace of the city, then in return, we, the individuals, will also find the city in it. For the past 43 years, therefore, Gordon Conwell has been seeking the peace along with all who join us. And when we say we seek peace of the city, we mean, and we pray, that the people of God will engage in concern and care of and for the city. By seeking peace of the city, we mean that we will envision wholeness, soundness, completeness, health, harmony, reconciliation, justice, and welfare of all its inhabitants. Not a condition of mere absence of tension, but of presence of justice, as the late Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. had said. Lastly, when we say and pray to seek peace of the city, we mean that the people will pray on behalf of the city, a prayer that will seek the nurturing and caring of the souls of all who inhabit it. We are a campus where 23% of my students are African-Americans, 17% Brazilians, 16% Spanish-speaking, 9% French Creole-speaking, 10% of all different languages in Asia, 5% languages from various different countries in Africa, including 16% white students as well. We speak in those languages, and we enjoy and love being with one another. So it is that prayer we pray every day, that the city will share that harmony, that love, with all who dwell in it. So therefore, let me conclude by thanking to our God, God who each of us hold dear in our heart. That our God's people in the city, where we all find our home, will find His peace. And the councilors gathered here today, at this place, who render their services to the people and all the neighborhoods in this city. May God's favor rest upon us all, so that through the service we render, there would be peace that we all desire. So, once again, in the name of the Lord, we hold dear in our heart. Blessings upon you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to invite Mary and her incredible team from the Animal Rescue League, along with Counselor O'Malley, for a quick presentation. Thank you, you guys. So we had a quick reception with the Animal Rescue League right before the council meeting, and I thought it was appropriate to-- Counselor O'Malley as well-- to invite Mary and her incredible team here. The Animal Rescue League is celebrating 120 years. I think we can all give a round of applause for that. And they've been responding, of course, to the needs of animals in our community, also ensuring that the folks who choose to have a pet, that they are taken care of, and that those connections continue, even when folks don't have the resources or the expertise in terms of taking care of their animals. They're on the front lines, ensuring that families are supported, as well as the care of animals. They provide veterinary care, adoption services, and field services. And last year, they served more than 16,000 animals in need. And I just wanted to share something really quickly, I guess two things. One is my dog, Sparky. I met when I went to go tour the Animal Rescue League, and I was talking to Mary, and he had just come in, and I said, "Who's that dog?" And she goes, "Oh, Spocky." So I ended up adopting Sparky, and he is a feisty one. I'm looking at Counselor O'Malley, because they've engaged, and sometimes it was pleasant, and sometimes not so much. But they do incredible work, so we often say, if you're in need or would like an animal, go visit the Animal Rescue League. And the second thing, I think, is extremely powerful about the work they do that often doesn't get recognized, is they have a lot of programs and services offered right in community, including in Dorchester, Mattapan, and Roxbury. And it's hard to sometimes find programs that have such reach but are intentional about going into community to serve folks. They offer a lot in terms of addressing constituent services, so they want to be partners with us in that work. And literally, they offer $10 clinics, so that if you have an animal in the community and you need care for that animal, and they see a lot of folks who have animals and have had animals for years that haven't gotten services, you can show up, you don't need to sign up ahead, they encourage that, pay $10 and get all the needs of your animal and your pet met. That's really important. And they also serve as an access point to our families. So often, if they're going in, of course, to meet with our families, they're seeing other things that we might need to address around their housing conditions, or things related to their family's health, or their children, or something else. So that's an important access point. Who knew that animals could be an access point in order to meet larger needs, or other needs, I should say, of a family? That's all I'm going to say. I'm going to invite Counselor O'Malley just to say a couple of words as well, given the work that he has done in this body with respect to many issues involving the Animal Rescue League, and then invite Mary to also say a few words on behalf of her incredible team members. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Harry Truman famously said, "If you want a friend in Washington, get a dog." While we're not in Washington, we are in Boston, and I think the adage holds true for all of us in government and public service. I am just so delighted to be here as we honor the ARL for their incredible work. 120 years, they've just really been doing yeoman's work, and I am particularly proud of the partnership that they-- and support that they led to this body when we passed the Puppy Mill Bill several years ago. I think one of the most innovative animal rights bills in the Commonwealth, if not New England, which has now been emulated in Cambridge and Stonem, and there's several companion pieces of legislation at the State House that we will continue to push. But to Mary and her team, congratulations. It's an incredibly important work that you do that we support. In passing the Puppy Mill Bill, I had said then, and it remains true now, that we want to make sure this is the greatest city in the world for all of our residents, even the four-legged ones. And here's to another 120 years of great success. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm delighted to be here today to celebrate our 120th year. Just a little piece of history, we were founded by a social worker from Dorchester 120 years ago, Anna Harris Smith. Her home is still on Pleasant Street, that has been renovated by Historic Boston. She was visiting immigrant families, and she was greatly disturbed, not only by the abuse she was seeing of working horses in the 1890s and cats and dogs on the street, but she was equally upset by the fact that the families and the children that she was servicing were witnessing abuse, and this was becoming normalized. And she felt it was critically important that humane treatment of animals not only benefit animals, but also relate to the human condition and relate to those human bonds. So she began the Animal Rescue League in Boston, expanded it greatly throughout eastern Massachusetts. We are in-- we have facilities in Boston, and Dedham, and Carver, and Brewster. But our heart and our beginnings are in Boston. And we, as the councilors have mentioned, we're really-- we've recommitted ourselves to community services. We continue to maintain shelters, we have clinics, we have veterinary services, but increasingly, we have mobile wagons. And those wagons are going out into the community every day of the week. And most recently, our wellness wagon that Counselor Campbell mentioned, we've partnered with ABCD, and we're in the Dorchester and Roxbury and Mattapan neighborhoods with ABCD, Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays in the morning, and we're providing wellness services to residents of those communities. And we hope that that's just the beginning. We hope that this is the model of what we can do in the future. We've provided the councilors with a-- all of you with an information package. There's lots of things, in particular, we want to be here for a resource as you get calls. We have a field services team that does go out into the community to rescue animals. We have a behavioral helpline, a behavioral helpline, for all of those individuals that are struggling with, "What do I do with the dog and the cat and this kind of behavior?" We also are one of two organizations in the state that has special state police officers that do humane law enforcement. So we have a variety of services. I hope that you will familiarize yourself with them. I'd love for you to all come down. I'd love for you to all adopt. But if you can't adopt, please, please visit and please call. And, you know, after this meeting, and any time, my card is in your package. Please reach out to us. We'd love to partner with this organization, with this council. Thank you.
If everyone can come up for a quick picture. Thank you, you guys.
Yes. I just realized that. Where'd that come from?
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I invite Counselor Zecham up for a special presentation of the Renegades. You can come on down.
Thank you, Madam President. If the team members, our national champions, would like to come down and join us at the podium. So many of you here are familiar with the Boston Renegades, who have come here to visit with us the last four years, the last two-- well, last year and this year as national champions, which is pretty friggin' good, two times in a row. And while I may not be here-- well, I won't be here next year, I expect them to be back here, celebrating a three-peat with you all next year. So I just briefly want to talk a little bit about the Renegades, and then we're going to hear from the team captain, or a delegate, whoever would like to-- whoever would like to speak briefly about this. But I think it's really exciting to have them here again, to celebrate what incredible role models they are, I think, for our young boys and young girls across the city of Boston and beyond, not just by winning championships, which, as we all know, in Boston is important, is expected, and is something to be celebrated, but also on the sportsmanship, on the skills, on the outreach to the community is critical, and something I think needs to be celebrated by this body here in City Hall and beyond. So it is certainly my pleasure and privilege to invite them back up here again to celebrate this championship. We do have an official proclamation. The flag of the Renegades is flying on City Hall Plaza. We were joined by Counselors Flynn, Garrison, and Wally from the Red Sox to celebrate that earlier today, and it's really, really an exciting time. So I want to turn it over to whichever delegate of the team, Brooke would like to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us today. This is our fourth year, like Counselor Zecham said, that we've had the privilege to be here. We really appreciate it. As Stephanie, one of our captains, said in the flag raising earlier today, recognition and exposure is critical for us, because we're completely volunteer-based. We run strictly off of donations and money that we raise for the team, and so the more exposure that we can get, the more fans we can get, and the more people that we can reach. So we really appreciate the recognition, and hopefully, we'll be back next year with that three-peat.
My colleagues would like to join us up here for a photo with the team, but you guys come up. Hold the proclamation. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
It's a pleasure. It's a pleasure to be here. Congratulations.
Thank you, Counselor Zecham. At this time, we'll move on to the regular order of business. Moving on to approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes are so approved. Moving on to communications from His Honor, the mayor.
Docket number 1373, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $150,000 for Canchea for FY 2020, awarded by the donor group, to be administered by the Office of Food Access. The grant will fund a match for the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, known as SNAP, through donations. Canchea donations will enable SNAP beneficiaries to double their buying power at Boston Farmers' Market and select neighborhood convenience stores, providing a greater access to fresh food.
Docket 1373 will be assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Docket number 1374, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $10,000 for the Human Trafficking Unit Training, awarded by the Imago Day Fund, to be administered by the Boston Police Department. The grant would fund workshops entitled, "Understanding Commercial Sexual Exploitation and the Role of the Buyer and the Use of Innovation Technology to Deter Arrest and Make Buyers Accountable."
Counselor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President. I rise to suspend and pass docket 1374 for the $10,000. As soon as it gets into the-- the quicker it gets into the Human Trafficking Unit, the better. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. At this time, Counselor McCarthy, who's Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1374. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1374 has been passed. Moving on to reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, if we could read dockets 1376 through 1378 together?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 1376, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of August 21, 2019. Docket number 1377, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the council at its meeting of September 11, 2019. And docket number 1378, notice received from Bruce Bickerstaff on his resignation from the zoning board of appeals.
Dockets 1376 through 1378 will be placed on file. Moving on to reports of committees.
Docket number 1264, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on September 11, 2019, docket number 1264, message and order approving a home rule petition to the general court entitled, "An Act Authorizing the Boston Redevelopment Authority to Grant Easements for Utility Purposes Over A Portion of A Certain Parcel of Land Located in the city of Boston." Submit a report recommending the home rule petition ought to pass in a new draft.
Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, I'm asking that this matter be withdrawn at this time, so that we can allow for the community discussion to take place between the stakeholders.
Thank you. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? At this time, Counselor Flaherty, who's Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, would like to withdraw docket 1264. Docket 1264 is withdrawn. Thank you. Moving on to matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 1107, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $936,920 in the form of a grant for the FY 20 Success Link Employment Program, awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development, passed through the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation of Boston, to be administered by the Department of Youth Engagement and Employment. The grant will fund summer jobs for 427 youth from July through August 2019.
Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a committee hearing Monday, September 23, which I'd like to thank Counsel Garrison for coming, and heard testimony from Rashid, Co-Poker Director of Youth Engagement and Employment, Eduardo Franco, the Manager of Youth Programs and Partnerships, and Melania Saha, the Youth Career Development Coordinator. This grant was for $936,920. We've already spent the money, this will reimburse us. The order was for the council authorization of grant funding for the mayor's Success Link Youth Jobs Program, which helps ensure disadvantaged youth, vulnerable youth, and youth with identified risk barriers to have access to employment opportunities. The Success Link program also includes career development coaching and curriculum, and additional workshops for youths on topics including healthy relationships, financial literacy, and transitioning from court-involved BPS-- transitioning for you-- court-involved BPSU, excuse me. The funding was used to fund summer jobs for 427 young people during the summer of 2019, and I recommend that this docket, 1107, passage. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Baker. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Counselor Garrison, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Jobs, Wage, and Workforce Development, and having attended the hearing on Monday afternoon, I concur with Chairman Baker that the city ought to accept and extend $936,920 for youth employment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Garrison. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? At this time, both the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Committee on Jobs, Wages, and Workforce Development seek acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1107. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1107 has been passed. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1379, Counselor Sabby George offered the following order for hearing regarding the Boston Police Department's crime lab.
Counselor Sabby George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise today to call for a hearing order, a hearing regarding the Boston Police Department's crime lab. As outlined in the hearing order, there is a grave and pressing need for an improved crime lab facility and more staff, so that Boston Police Department can quickly process forensic evidence crucial to their investigations. The state recently passed legislation to hasten the processing of rape kits. It is crucial that we hear from the Boston Police Department to better understand how that legislation and increased funding will affect their work, as well as from the advocates on the remaining needs of survivors of sexual assault and other crimes. I do want to note from the hearing order that we are facing, as a city, almost 1,400 unsolved homicide cases, and that's as of the beginning of this summer. And we also know that from January 1 of 2018 until midsummer, there have been 380 for coming, and heard testimony from Rashid, Co-Director of Youth Engagement and Employment, Eduardo Franco, the Manager of Youth Program in Partnerships, and Melania Saha, the Youth Career Development Coordinator. This grant was for $936,920. Thank you. We've already spent the money. This will reimburse us. The order was for the council authorization of grant funding for the mayor's Success Link Youth Jobs Program, which helps ensure disadvantaged youth, vulnerable youth, and youth with identified risk barriers to have access to employment opportunities. The Success Link Program also includes career development coaching and curriculum, and additional workshops for youths on topics including healthy relationships, financial literacy, and transitioning from court-involved BPS, transitioning for you, court-involved BPS, you, excuse me. The funding was used to fund summer jobs for 427 young people during the summer of 2019, and I recommend that this docket, 1107, passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Counsel Garrison, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Jobs, Wage, and Workforce Development, and having attended the hearing on Monday afternoon, I concur with Chairman Baker that the city ought to accept and extend 93, 936,920 for youth employment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Garrison. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? At this time, both the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Committee on Jobs, Wages, and Workforce Development seek acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1107. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1107 has been passed. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1379, Counselor Sabby George offered the following order for a hearing regarding the Boston Police Department's crime lab.
Counselor Sabby George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise today to call for a hearing order, a hearing regarding the Boston Police Department's crime lab. As outlined in the hearing order, there is a grave and pressing need for an improved crime lab facility and more staff so that Boston Police Department can quickly process forensic evidence crucial to their investigations. The state recently passed legislation to hasten the processing of rape kits. It is crucial that we hear from the Boston Police Department to better understand how that legislation and increased funding will affect their work, as well as from the advocates on the remaining needs of survivors of sexual assault and other crimes. I do want to note from the hearing order that we are facing, as a city, almost 1,400 unsolved homicide cases, and that's as of the beginning of this summer. And we also know that from January 1 of 2018 until midsummer, there have been 387 rape or attempted rape cases, as well as 259 shooting incidents, 67 fatal shootings, that's data from earlier this summer, as well as 243 non-fatal shootings. Having the resources that our crime lab specialists need, our forensic scientists in particular, they play such an important role in this work, as do the facilities that they use and the equipment that they need to do this work, and to do it in a timely manner. Our residents deserve that. Victims of violent crime deserve that, so we need to make sure that we have all the pieces and the tools in place for that work to happen. I also want to thank, as I present this hearing order to the council, Jack Studley, who is a, now a junior in high school, a resident of Boston, was with our office this summer, and he actually, as a young man, put this, pulled all this information together to present this hearing order to all of you today for a future hearing. Jack got exception from school today to join us to hear his hearing order. As he wrote it, presented to this council, so I just want to recognize that Jack is with us. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Sabby George. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Please add my name and look forward to an expedited hearing. Just on a personal note, I had a cousin that was murdered down in Dade County, Florida. If it wasn't for the tremendous work of the Dade County authorities, particularly the forensic team that they had, we would have never known who had murdered my cousin, nor we would, we have ever gotten the justice that we got for it. So, a very important, critical tool that we need to combat crime, but also, most importantly, to solve the unsolved murders in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Flaherty's name. Anyone else like to add their name to the hearing order? Counselor Flaherty, Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Baker, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Garrison, Counselor Janey, Counselor McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zachem, as well as the Chair. Docket 1379 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Moving on to personnel orders.
Docket number 1380, Counselor Campbell offered the following order for the
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1380. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1380 has been passed. Moving on to late files. I am informed by the clerk that there are three late files. For clarification, you have a committee report, but it references three dockets, hence why we're saying three late files, but the Chair is going to talk about them all at the same time. So, at this time, I'd like to add those dockets to today's agenda. Any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, the matters are added to today's agenda. Madam Clerk, if you could read, actually, all three dockets into the record at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0111, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $123,715 in the form of a grant for the FY 19 Fair Housing Assistance Program awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development to be administered by the Boston Fair Housing and Equity Commission. Docket number 0768, message and order authorizing the city of Boston, acting through the Department of Neighborhood Development, to accept and expend payments in the amount of $30 million given by the city of Boston's Inclusionary Development Policy Fund for the purpose of producing and preserving affordable housing in the city of Boston. And docket number 1183, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to apply for and accept and expend federal fiscal year 2019 Continuum of Care Program grant funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development in an amount not to exceed $33 million. These funds will be used to support programs that provide services and housing for the homeless.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Edward, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. We had a recent hearing on all three matters wherein we discussed specifically where the money's going to go and assessed several things. I just wanted to report back. Thank you to Counselors Flynn and to Counselor Baker for both attending the meeting. The most, the grant that's coming up on September 30 that we need to make a deadline is for the Continuum of Care Grant that supports our housing and is going to continue our work to eliminate chronic homelessness. That was presented by Leila Bernstein. That's docket 1183. Docket 078 was presented by Deputy Director Rick Wilson. He discussed $30 million being used under the IDP funding. That's the money that we're getting from the linkage program and going into our neighborhood housing trust. Counsel Flynn had several good questions about how that income is generated, what neighborhoods are generating a majority of that income, and how they're seeing or assuring that that income comes back to the neighborhood. We discussed at length the legal implications of making it neighborhood-specific, but also wanted to make sure that we were very clear, and we're waiting to get those answers, and they committed to those answers to us. We also, and specifically about the southwestern waterfront, Counsel Flynn wanted to make sure he had an understanding of how much IDP was being generated from that area. And then with regards to docket 0111, this is for fair housing. We got to hear from the Director of the Office of Fair Housing, William Anuah, wherein he discussed their staff, where the funding's going to go, how the money will be split up, and also how they coordinate with other agencies in assuring that our housing policies actually meet the needs and spirit of the Fair Housing Act, and making sure that our housing agencies, including DND, BPDA, are informed about the needs and rights, and how we're also able to get out into the community and help people who feel they've been discriminated against. So, it is our, my recommendation that we pass these dockets and assure that the funding is allocated as soon as possible to the appropriate agencies.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Anyone else looking to speak on these matters? At this time, Counsel Edward, who's Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of the three late dockets. I will take each of them separately. For the first late docket, docket 0111, all those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0111 has been passed. For the second late-file docket, docket 0768, all those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 07, 0768 has been passed. And lastly, for the third late docket, docket 1183, all those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1183 has been passed. Moving on to the green sheets. Anyone wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so now. Moving right along, I am informed by the clerk that there is one late-file matter, that was a Boston accent coming out. Born and raised in the city of Boston, matter. Got to lighten it up, right? I'm informed by the clerk that there is one late-file matter which, in the absence of objection, will be added to today's consent agenda. Hearing no objections and seeing no objections, the late-file matter is so added. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda. At this time, all those in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is adopted. And at this time, does anyone have any announcements they'd like to make? Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
I would just acknowledge, like to acknowledge my mother-in-law today. It's her 75th birthday. We lost her five years ago. She was a yah-yah, and just want to, you know, connect. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for unanimous consent to make a brief statement.
Go right ahead.
One of the people for whom we will be closing a memory of, in fact, I believe it was the late matter, was a woman whose Boston accent would rival even the Kennedys. Her name was Eileen Nash, and she was a legend in this town. Many of you knew her. She was an educator in Boston for nearly 30 years. She concluded her career several years ago as a Deputy Superintendent for Individualized Learning under Superintendent McDonough at the time. When I was first elected to the seat November of 2010, she was the principal of both the Beethoven and the Orinberger schools, and she was just such a remarkable force. I'd always say to her that if I were to cast a movie on Boston Public Schools, she would be, she'd walk out of Central Castle with what you'd want as a principal. She was tough, she was smart, she was funny, she was incredibly loving. Her two great passions were the children of Boston and the Red Sox. I remember running into her at Fenway Park, where she was a vendor as well. She would do that in summers and on weekends, and she was just great. I would see her, we'd stay in touch, we, you know, got to be fairly close. We stayed in touch, and I'd always see her in June for the Orinberger's graduation. And she didn't come this year, and it was shocking because she literally would drive up from anywhere to be there. She loved those kids so much, and we later found out that she had a pretty serious cancer diagnosis at the beginning of the summer and passed away over the weekend. So, I just wanted to just take this opportunity to acknowledge her. She was just such an amazing part of this success story of BPS that we don't often talk about. Lord knows we have our challenges, and Eileen would have been the first to have admitted that, but she and so many people like her really helped make it such a great system, and she was a true daughter of Boston, and she will be deeply and dearly missed. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Baker.
I just, back to my original point, I had never mentioned Elaine's name. It was Elaine Today Adams is my mother-in-law. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Any other announcements? At this time, I would like all colleagues, guests, and staff to please rise as we adjourn today's meeting. And we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counsel O'Malley, Eileen A. Nash. For the Chair and Counsel Flynn, William Bill Venter. For Counsel Flaherty, Mario Oliveri. For Counselors Flynn and Flaherty, John Jack Barry, Agnes Powers. And for Counsel Flynn, John Carlton. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of those aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again in this chamber at Boston City Hall on Wednesday, October 2nd at 12:00 noon. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The council is adjourned.